All right. This is call to order, the September 1st, 2020, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Gene, could you do attendance for us, please? And then I'll read a statement.
Sure, can we take a roll call? So John Simons, are you on? John Simons? John, you're muted. Can you unmute? Welcome back to John. Peter, are you on?
Yes, Peter's here.
Kelly?
Here.
Erin?
Present.
Aton?
I'm here.
John Simons?
Well, I see him.
So John, you may have to, if you called on a phone, you may-
I'm here, I'm here, okay.
And-
We got you, okay.
Kate Bargnese has informed us that she will not be on the meeting tonight.
Okay, very good. So that's everybody. We have five. Kelly, we'll probably have you vote on any, if we're voting on any special permit, we'll have you vote. I'm not sure if we are yet or not, but if you are, we'll have you vote. All right, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30, A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by a remote participation. No in-person meeting of the board or members of the public will be permitted. Members of the public or anyone wishing to watch may do so on television. Whether it's Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, they go to the town's website, www.northandovercam.org. If you have any questions or comments, you may email them to geneenright, her email is J E N R I G H T at northandoverma.gov, and they will be addressed at the appropriate time. That's, I think that's it. Okay, so let's start with the bond release. 1679 Osgood Street, Chad Lawler requests for release of a $2,000 performance bond associated with site plan review special permit granted November 7th, 2017.
Okay, so the applicant-
Gene, you want to talk about that? Thank you.
The applicant requests return of a $2,000 performance bond, a copy of the decision dated November 7th of 17. The final site plan and the engineer certification are included in your packet. The project allowed for a contractor's yard and outside storage of landscape products and landscape slash contractors' equipment. The applicant is, was hoping to have an as-built for tonight. He called me today. He does not have the as-built, but he expects the as-built by either Friday or Tuesday of next week. The engineer has submitted a certification letter that the project was built in accordance with the plans. I have conducted two site plans, and the reason for two is I did one on a Thursday afternoon when the business was operational. The site plans are in your packet. They're, they depict nine parking spaces to the rear of the lot. I will say those spaces are not delineated as the surface is really like a crushed gravel. So the spaces are not delineated, however, they were totally clear at the time of my site visit. The trees have been installed at the rear of the property to provide buffer. The seven tenant parking spaces have been, signs have been installed to label the tenant spaces. And the two specified pavement areas have been installed. The pavement was installed per the building commissioner's condition to have that in front of the tenant spaces. I then went on a weekend, again, both these visits were unannounced. And again, I just wanted to confirm that that parking area was either being used as parking or clear. And it again was clear. And so it is a contractor's yard. There's a significant amount of equipment parked on the lot, but it's parked in areas that were identified for equipment to be parked. The lines themselves are not necessarily delineated, but the parking is in the appropriate areas. So-
Gina, this-
Good.
This is Aton, so one, can we get a recommendation for, for another? But two, before that, I remember when this one came before the board, there were some neighbors that had questions or comments about lighting and noise. Have we had any issues since, since the, since the permit was issued?
We have not. That's a good question. I meant to include that I have not had any correspondence from the abutters to the rear of the lot since this became operational. And as far as a recommendation, I mean, like I said, it's a contractor yard. It's very similar to the other uses along this script. I would, if you authorized the release, I would condition it upon receipt of that as-built. I would like to get that on file from the engineer. And so I wouldn't turn in the memo to the treasurer's office for release until that as-built has been received.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, can we get a motion to approve the release of the $2,000 performance bond for 1679 Osgood Street conditioned on the submittal of a as-built that meets the approval of the planner?
We'll move.
This is Aaron.
I'll second.
By John, Aaron.
Aaron, second. Okay, roll call vote. John?
John, vote yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Okay, approved as conditioned. Okay, can we go to next? Gene, can we do next? We'll do the, let's open the public hearing. And then we'll continue it, right? That's the plan?
Yes, for 335 Willow Street.
Okay, so I'm going to read another statement. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by a remote participation. No members of the public or any members of the board will be meeting in person. For anyone who wishes to participate, you may watch the meeting online at www.northandoverma.gov. You may go to northandovercam.org. You may watch on Channel 8 on Comcast or Verizon Channel 26. If you wish to submit questions or comments, you may do so by emailing them to geneenright@northandoverma.gov, and they will be addressed during the public hearing. Okay, so we're calling public hearing, a new public hearing, 335 Willow Street. Muffin or muffin? Muffin, 3X LLC, care of Michael Ogden. Application for site plan review special permit under Article 8, Part 3 in Article 10, 195, 10.7 of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes construction of two building additions totaling 8,708 square feet with associated parking, landscaping, utilities, and stormwater management design. Primary use proposes manufacturing and warehouse. Property is located in the I-1 zoning district. And we're going to continue this until September 15th, 2020.
With, with no evidence heard.
And we're not hearing anything on that too. Okay. Very good. So what's, do we need a motion or do we just do that?
I think you just did that.
Let's just, okay, continue till September 15th. Uh, next, let's go to the discussion item, 135 Carter Field Road. Jim Razzo requests for a waiver of watershed special permit so as to allow approximately 1,400 square feet of vegetation clearing beyond the limit of the clearing as shown on the definitive subdivision plan and within the non-discharge zone of the watershed protection district. Applicant wishes to create a suitable space for a shed and swing set. All right, Gene, can you tell us about this one?
Sure. So when this subdivision was approved in the early 2000s, the subdivision required a watershed special permit in addition to a planned residential development special permit. The applicant is seeking a waiver of a watershed special permit in order to clear vegetation within the non-discharge zone to create an area for a shed and swing set to the rear of the house. The area proposed is approximately 1400 square feet. Is located beyond the limit of clearing tree line shown on the approved subdivision plan. And so the limit of work line was the tree line itself. There would be no change to topography, and the applicant has indicated he would work around existing trees where feasible. This subdivision received, as I said, the planned residential district special permit and watershed. Excerpts from those two permits as they relate to cutting slash clearing have been included in your packet. I've tried to capture the existing conditions of the proposed area in photos. Aton actually emailed me a couple today as well that I've included in your packet. It appears much of the area may have been cleared previously by owners, by previous owners. And some vegetation is starting to grow back. The mowed area has a slight slope. And then where the vegetation begins, the topography drops about two feet. And again, that topography would remain the same if you were to allow this waiver request. So in your packet, there's several photos that, if you could bring those up, I think it'll be helpful.
All right, and yeah, so I did go out, I did go out there, I actually know the applicant. And I wanted to get a better sense of what they were looking to do. This is Aton, by the way. So I did go out there, took a look at pictures. From what I got, the sense it looks like, from what they want to do, it would require the removal of two trees. If you look at two small trees, if you look at picture one, and you pick one, it's those kind of two in the middle there. That's what I got this sense. It's interesting because their next door has a pool, which is clearly like really into the watershed. No idea how that happened. Other than that one, though, it does look like the tree line is pretty well maintained throughout the neighborhood. So it's just kind of interesting to me.
That can be seen in the rearview photo that's also in the packet. So I tried to depict like that tree line exists on this side of the subdivision. But you'll notice that there are several pools on the other side of the subdivision. They just don't happen to be within the buffer zone, I trust. But the one immediately adjacent wasn't, was installed, I think in 2003. So that, that obviously was installed, and it was some time ago.
And Gene, did you tell me, so there, beyond where they're proposing the swing set and shed, there are more trees? Did you say there's like a walking path back there?
Yep, so there's a wooded trail to the rear of this property, off property, but right off property, and I believe Essex Greenbelt. They, they have decals on trees, so I did walk that trail. It, it shows on the subdivision plans off of the soccer field as you drive in to the left. And then that wooded trail follows the property line all the way around this subdivision. And so there's a, there's a significant amount of woods between where he's requesting and that trail, I would say.
Okay, and I know the applicant is, Jim is not here, but it's like Jessica I see is on the call. So Jessica, can you tell us a little bit about what you're planning here? What you'd like to do?
Certainly. All we're really looking to do is clear out, as you said, some of the brush area that abuts our lawn to clear an area to put a swing set and a shed. And if you look at the area, you'll see to the left where the pool is. The reason we don't want to put it so close to the pool is that our yard is not fenced in. And I'm, I'm trying to keep the kids away from access to the pool. The gate on that pool is often left open, and I'm trying to keep the kids as far away from that area as possible. To the right of our yard is really not enough room to even put an adequate swing set. But there's also a slope that would make it really, make it unable for us to put one there, and it's next to the propane tank. So it's really the most suitable place. We're trying to limit any disturbance of the area. As you said, there's a lot of trees back there. There's only two trees that we would need to remove to adequately put a swing set in a shed in that area. There's a ton of trees between there and that path that Gene talked about. And then from the path to the water is extremely wooded as well.
Okay, and how old are your kids?
I have two-year-old twins and a four-year-old. And it's really for my sanity, too.
Good luck with that. Okay, let's go, members of the board, questions? With John, any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any questions.
Aaron, any questions or comments?
Yeah, just for the record, yeah, I know the area, the proposed area, it already seems like it's already been cleared out. It's probably a suitable place for a shed and a swing set. But just if the applicant can clarify, just once again, I think you'd mentioned some of the aspects why the shed and the playset would not be, could not be suitably placed within the grassed area of the yard?
Certainly. If you're looking at, from the house towards the wooded area that we're looking to clear out to the right, immediately off the house, you'll see it sloped up towards the driveway as well as there's propane there. And there's just not enough area in, not, grass area to put either the swing set or the shed in, in there. And then if you look to the left, while there might be area there, it's very close to this in-ground pool. And I have concerns about leaving the kids on a swing set that close to the pool. As I indicated, the fence is often left open, and obviously it's an attractive nuisance to small children, and I just don't think it's safe to put them that close to the pool, to be honest.
Great, thank you. Attractive nuisance. I'm the only one with lawyer talk on that.
I know, I'm sorry.
Peter, questions, comments?
All set.
Okay, Kelly, any questions or comments?
Nope, off set, thank you.
Okay, great. So could we get a motion? I don't see any issues. It seems limited. I would like to condition it to, if we approve the waiver, that it be limited to those, the cutting of two trees and the shrub. You need to cut any additional trees, maybe come back and let us know, but it looked from, what I could tell, it was just those two trees in the middle. So could we get a motion to approve with the conditions?
So moved?
I'm moved by John. Can we get a second?
Aaron, I'll make a second.
All right.
Second, Aaron.
Aton, while there's, yeah, while there's discussion available, I, so I've depicted kind of a 34-foot by 40-foot area on this plan, so you want me to condition it to be limited to that size as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Vote, John?
John, vote yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Aton, I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Okay, and that's it. Okay, that is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
So-
Yep.
Just so she knows, I will draft the decision that will be submitted to the clerk's office, and it will require a condition, a condition to record that at the registry as well.
Okay.
Understood, thank you.
Okay.
Great, all right. Continued public hearings. 1160 Great Pond Road. Application for a watershed protection district special permit, site plan review, special permit under chapter 195, Article 4, Chart 5, Section 195.8 and 195, 10.7 of the Town and North Andover Zoning Bylaw to authorize a phase redevelopment and reconstruction of certain existing developed areas of property, including relocation to south entrance, rules on reconstruction of building, accessway and landscape areas, improvements in installation of new drainage improvement, and associated landscaping. Majority of the proposed work is within the general zone with a small portion of reconstruction of walks, parking, and landscaping on the outer edge of the non-disturbed, it's a non-discharge zone, project is located in the R1 zone. Okay. Gene, want to get us up to date?
Sure. So there's been a lot of progress since the staff report was put in the packet. So as you know, we had a site visit shortly after our last meeting. Most board members, we got a full overview of the project in terms of the south entrance, building reconstruction, building addition. So since staff report got put in the packet, all department review has been satisfied. The police department had a site visit, discussed sightlines. The fire department has approved the revised plan and access points. Stormwater review was satisfied, I think it was approved this morning. So she has signed off on the project as well. If you choose, I would ask the applicants to kind of explain the last changes to the stormwater management plan. And then if you're satisfied, I would recommend a draft decision for the next meeting.
Okay, that sounds like a great plan. I can, I'll just say that I was impressed on the sidewalk about the thoughtfulness of how things were laid out and how decisions were made about the different, how the length of the driveway, the width of the driveway, how it would go. It seemed very thoughtful, so I appreciated that. Okay, so why don't we hear from the applicant about any changes to stormwater? Then we'll take comments and questions from members of the board, and then after that, we'll see where we're on.
Good evening. It's Andrew Leonard here, AT Leonard Associates. Just to figure out, give you an update for the C A L, by the way. Give you an update on what's been reviewed as far as the reviewing engineer in the stormwater. I have kind of five summary points. Anthony Cleaton's a civil engineer. It's also on the call. And we have detailed questions after I'm done with the summary. The first, the first major, major clarifications were regarding the history of the stormwater on campus, including previous approved and constructed infrastructure. The reviewing engineer is a new reviewing engineer compared to the previous projects that were submitted before the board. So we went through some steps and some clarifications to, to update the current reviewing engineer on some of the history and where there are rain gardens and other stormwater controls that are in place and how they're helping protect stormwater across the campus. The second clarification were a series of calculations, which were updated in the stormwater report itself. They were sort of like the technical calculations about clarifications around outflow and rates and riprap pads at the end of pipes, pipe capacities, things like that. Anthony Cleaves on our team was, you know, updated all those calculations and submitted those. And I believe, as Gene said, we got an email this morning that the reviewing engineer seemed satisfied with those calculation updates. The review engineer also brought up some recommendations and updates for the O and M plan and map, which we updated according to those recommendations. They seemed to make a lot of sense. So we, we updated and resubmitted those to Gene. There was some supplemental information pertaining to the specific watershed special permit requirements like school's fertilization plan, some of the no toxic material information, no degradation to the watershed. All of those have been, been sure to have been submitted to, to Gene as part of the package. There's been no change to the fertilization plan since the last board review as part of the arts project. They've been following the plan that was part of that approval. And the last thing is there were some tweaks and edits to the erosion control plan based upon recommendations of the reviewing engineer, just to assure we have proper coverage and protections for erosion during construction. That was sort of the, the summary of the communications and edits to the plans and stormwater report based upon the reviewing engineer's comments. Any questions? For us? Anything we can give you?
Great, thank you. John, we'll start with you. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I guess the one comment that I would make is that, Aton, I would echo your sentiments about the quality of the preparation and presentation and the work. I thought the sidewalk was one of the best I've ever been on. It really helped understanding exactly what you're trying to do, how you're trying to do, how you were managing all the trade-offs and so forth. So thank you for that. I thought it was very helpful. So at this point, I think we're in good shape when moving this forward.
Great, thank you, John. Aaron, I know you weren't at the sidewalk, but do you want to give us your, any questions or comments or thoughts?
No, I have nothing. I just did a drive-by the other day of just to get my bearings, and I listened to the August 18th meeting. I have nothing at this time.
Great, thank you. Peter?
All set.
All right, Kelly?
I have no new comments, off set.
Great, thank you. So Gene, I think we're ready. If we could have a draft decision for the next meeting, that would be great.
Yep, understood.
Okay, and what date is that? Number 50, okay, September 15th. Continued into September 15th, fantastic.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, 40 Flagship Drive, AKA Zero Flagship Drive, BWT Holding LLC. Application for site plan review special permit under Article 8, Part 3, Article 10, 195, 10.7 of the North Andover Zoning Bylaw. The applicant proposes construction of a 15,100-square-foot single-story metal building with associated parking, landscaping, utilities, and stormwater management sign. Primary use is a proposed office to serve the applicant's construction company. And the accessory uses are indoor storage for equipment and vehicles, as well as an outdoor gravel laydown area also to serve the construction company. Robbery is located in the I-1 zoning district. All right, Gene, want to tell us where we are on that?
So again, there's been some advancement since the staff report was generated. As you know, it's a 15,100-square-foot metal building proposed to be constructed on an undeveloped lot. At the last meeting, we discussed a significant change in grade from the front to the rear of the lot with a close proximity to the residential district and building setbacks. I believe it was Aaron that referenced, we, we had a previous contractor yard somewhat recent permitted, and that was the bond release for tonight, 1679 Osgood Street. So I included that decision in your packet. That, that contractor yard also abutted a residential district. The decision references conditions related to storage of flammable and/or combustible material, prohibits a demonstratable adverse impact to the surrounding area resulting from excessive noise, dust, smoke, or vibration, which are higher than levels now experienced from uses permitted in the surrounding area. It actually conditioned hours of operation at that site as well, compliance with state air pollution control regulations and policies in connection with sound levels and outdoor lighting specifications. Also, at the last meeting, the architectural plans indicated that the owner intends to rent six of the seven contractor bays shown on the plan. I requested a termination from the building commissioner as to whether the renting space- I requested a determination from the building commissioner as to whether the renting space would be allowed as accessory use, and he has communicated that it would not be allowed as accessory use. And again, he has indicated that he has spoken with the property owner as well to communicate that. The stormwater review, the peer review has submitted their first review memo, and department review has submitted comments from Health Conservation, DPW Operations, Police, Fire and Building, and DPW. I believe all the department reviews have been satisfied. We're still waiting conclusion of the stormwater review. John, you had asked questions related to the setbacks from the residential property that abuts. And in your packet tonight, there's an aerial view that indicates that the proposed building would be approximately a hundred and ninety feet from the nearest house. The adjacent building, which exists today, is approximately two hundred and thirty feet from the nearest residential home, so somewhat similar. The I, I would say in review of the plans and the erosion control plan, it shows a silk, a silk fence for a small portion of the area that abuts Willow Street, and then a erosion control sock that runs the entire side property line. In thinking about that and past occurrences, I would recommend that a condition be in place that allows for a pre-construction site meeting to review that erosion control, and if necessary, the planner can authorize additional controls if warranted. But other than that, I think we're the project is still in review for stormwater, and the applicants can talk about their responses.
Okay, and Jean, have we had any abutter comments or neighbor or any comment there?
We have not had any abutter comments, and they have submitted revised architectural plans. Again, I think after the board packet was sent to you, but the revised architectural plans eliminate the tenant space. They just call it base space now.
Okay, so why don't we hear from the applicants about what changes they've made to the plans since the last date, and then where we stand on the stormwater?
Yeah, this is Charlie, we are Meridian Associates, and we, I reviewed this the last time around because we already had the, we had the peer reviewers' comments, but, but just, I'll keep, so I'll keep it brief, but it was mostly supplemental information on the drainage, just providing, for example, there was, for some reason, in the, in the local regulations, it requires an analysis of a relatively small storm, a half-inch rainstorm. We had provided previously the, you know, the two, the ten, the one hundred, I think maybe the fifty as well, whatever was required, but we missed that small one, so we, we had done that analysis. There was several points of clarification about the, the stormwater analysis that we made. We increased the side, the size of the study area at the recommendation of the peer reviewer. We, both at the behest of the the conservation commission comments, as well as the peer reviewer, you know, we did add some, some erosion control, given that the site had been historically, that previously there had been some problems on this site. And I, and I did, I went over that at the last hearing as well. We, we made some changes to the, to the, the long-term erosion. Well, it's both the operation and maintenance of the site of the stormwater management provisions for the site. We made some revisions to that. Moving on to the comments from departments, the, the fire department wanted a swept path analysis that we provided. The DPW asked for us to, to add pipe sizes to some of the utilities, and it was, it was things of that nature. There was no real significant changes to the design. It was mostly, mostly centered on just answering questions in, you know, in the supporting documents and adding a few, like I said, pipe sizes to the plans, things of that nature.
Okay, and what is, what is the applicant's thoughts on if we were to condition like we did this other contractor's yard in twenty seventeen regarding hours of operation, regarding noise levels, regarding lighting, disturbance, and things like that?
Yeah, can I, if I inquire, is Bill, Bill Linsky is the applicant. Bill, are you here in this group?
Yeah.
He'd be okay with hours of operation, and Bill, cut me off if I say the wrong thing. But he certainly, he doesn't want the hours to be so tight that he can't, you know, that he can't do his business, so.
Jean, what were the hours? Yeah, Jean, what were the hours?
They were seven to seven with the exception for snow plowing operations, so I'd be interested to know if this applicant performs snow plowing operations as well.
Not currently.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
We can still put it in as an exception in case they want to.
I, I think Bill at the last meeting had mentioned that, you know, that he, he might be in with seven just to start, you know, a machine to leave the site. Is that correct, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't even need to be there, you know, that late, I mean, but I probably would have like vehicles leaving there prior to seven. Just our operation, we, we start on the project at seven, so we're, you know, they're rolling out of there before that.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we hear from members of the board thoughts about potential conditions, issues that you see, questions that you still have, things along those lines. So, John?
Yes, hey Jean, by the way, I figured out how to click through on the PDF, but of course, since I'm on my work computer, it won't let me access it, so. I was such like, I'm going to ask you a couple dumb questions, so my apologies. If, given the slope of the property is, is the the building going to, are there going to be like any retaining walls or anything like that? Is, is the building going to be at a lower level than natural grade? I, again, and I apologize because I don't have the drawings right in front of me.
Yeah, it's, there's places where there's cuts and there's places where there's fills. We, we don't have any retaining walls on the site, but we do have some riprap slope in several areas. The building is mostly in an area that's cut. So we'll actually, you know, it's at the, it's at the top side of the property, so we'll be lowering the grade, you know, in the, in the area of the building and then bringing it back up to grade either with a three-to-one slope or with, or with some riprap. And then, but then to make up for that, there's also this fill on the other side of the site, because we want to match and have as, we don't want a lot of material leaving the site, so we want to match the site as much as possible.
And John, I, so John, sorry, can I just add to that? So at the last meeting, I asked what the elevation would be relative to the houses, and they indicated that the grade would be similar to that, to the house that they're pointing to on the dimensional plan.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, got it, got it. Now, yeah, I understand the context better now. Jean, the, the drainage, given that it's on a slope and there's cut and fills, is there anything at all dicey in the drainage that still has to be worked out, or is it, is it all in good shape?
I think it's in good shape. We need the final sign-off from the stormwater comments, but I think they've addressed the, the bylaw requirements.
Okay, okay. And then getting back to the, the proximity of the house to the, the neighborhood, what's the screening plan in the back, and are there going to be any lights in the back? You know, just, how are we going to mitigate any impact? There, there's no parking in the back, is there? The parking's all in the front?
No, the parking is all down in front. There is a fifty-foot wide strip of, of natural vegetation that will be kept in place. And the, there is one light that is on the neighborhood side of the building, but that is, it's a, you know, it's a full cutoff fixture. It's just directing light directly down onto the ground, and there's no spillage of light off the property, and it really shouldn't be able to be seen, you know, off the property. The, the other thing, when we didn't show this on the plan, and we, and that's my fault, we, me and the owner had talked about this, was adding, was just adding a probably six-foot stockade fence along that back, that back line. It acts both as a, you know, even though there is, you know, a pretty good strip of, of natural vegetation that occurs there, you know, the fence would act both as a, as a good sound barrier as, as well as a visual barrier to the, you know, to the activities that are occurring on the site. So we'll, we'll add that to the plan.
So John, that's, that's what I was going to suggest. I think a fence would have some value back there for both noise and visual, given that the elevations will be equal at that house. As far as parking, there's eight parking spaces shown to the, to the, close to the front of the lot. The bays, there's eight bays that will have equipment in them, but then what they describe as a laydown area is, you know, this general area along the middle of the site that will have contractor equipment as well. And as far as the fifty-foot vegetated buffer, that's required according to zoning. So when you abut a residential district, you need to provide, the first fifty feet needs to remain as, as this natural vegetated buffer.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the end, Jean, we need to put in anything, you know, that's reasonable. I mean, it's, I think we can come to a, a good accommodation. I mean, I think the applicant wants to be a good neighbor and doesn't want to piss off the, anybody that lives there because that doesn't work in their interest in the long term. I just want to make sure that we do everything we reasonably can. Ironically, this past weekend, I was cleaning up some old files, and I found an old planning board file, and one of the first things that fell out was a mass letter from the people of Marion Drive complaining about a commercial project in this office park, so it was kind of ironic. I, but I think if we take the right precautions here, we're, we're not going to have a problem like that, so.
Okay, I will, when it comes time to draft the decision, I'll review both the Willow Street, Bacon Joy, which also has abutters. They happen to be in Andover, but they had some, some of butter cop, comments, as well as others that I can find on Willow Street, a flagship drive that abutted Marion Drive as well.
Great, good, thank you.
Thank you, Jean, and I did, I liked the comments, the, the conditions you read earlier from the Osgood one, so I thought that were helpful to incorporate. Aaron, question?
Regulations in terms of noise and odors and vibration, you know, they fall under a state regulation as well, so.
Great, thank you. Aaron, questions, comments?
Yeah, just one. I know there's a fifty-foot wetland buffer between this proposed facility and the property line of adjacent houses. I'm looking on the Google Maps satellite view, and it looks like there's some existing trees. I don't know if they're within this wetland buffer, but my question is, are there any trees along that area of, you know, adjacent to the, the, the houses that would be coming down as part of this proposed project?
So, Aaron, I can add to that, Aaron. So it's currently an undeveloped lot, so the whole lot is trees? The fifty-foot buffer is required according to zoning. It's not a wetland buffer, but it's a zoning setback requirement. But, but the whole lot is a wooded lot today.
And they're on the wetlands.
Right, this is not before the.
Okay, yeah, well, that's I'm looking, I'm looking at the, the applicant's plan. It says wetland buffer, so anyway, it, it's setback, okay. But, okay, so essentially within that, that buffer that, I, I guess I'm just curious if there's, you know, the satellite view, I'm not sure how old it is. It looks like there's been a significant amount of clearing, so I guess my concern is just having a natural buffer. I know offenses we just talked about, but a natural buffer of trees to help with the, any kind of sound issues or lighting issues.
Yeah. There, there is, that buffer is, is today, is mature trees, and I'm not sure what plan you're looking at. The, the site was cleared, I, I'm not sure if it was fifteen, twenty years ago. Most of that vegetation is grown back. The fifty-foot strip at the back of the site has never been cleared. That's, that's mature trees, and those, those mature trees will remain there. At the fifty-foot buffer strip we're talking about.
Okay, great. Peter? No, I don't have any comments. Peter, do you have any? Or, no, he's left, I think he went to unmute and exited out because I've done that. Kelly, any questions or comments?
No additional comments.
Sorry about that. All set.
Okay. Yep, okay. All right, so Jean, next steps?
So I would anticipate the stormwater review sign-off prior to the next meeting. If that occurs with enough, enough time, then I would anticipate drafting a decision for the next meeting.
Okay, all right, and working in some of those conditions that we just discussed. Okay.
Yes.
Great, so why don't we continue this until September fifteenth? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're down to meeting minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. I thank you both. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes? Do we have minutes from the sidewalk or just last meeting?
Nope, you have both in the packet, so the last meeting as well as the.
Oh, great, great. So could we get a motion to approve the August eighteen twenty twenty minutes and the August twenty-first twenty twenty site plan minutes?
So moved?
Moved by John?
Second?
Second by Peter. Okay, John, vote?
John, vote yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
All right, Eton, I vote yes. Pete?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Okay, anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Okay, good job. All right, can we get a motion? Good? Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second by John? John, I'm by Peter.
John, John, vote yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Great meeting, everybody.
Excellent. Good job.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Next game has six minutes left. All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.